...minutes, so you can post it on the website. And, uh, any questions or questions while we consider being minutes approved? Minutes are approved. Um, before I go into the recognition of first respondents, I guess I should introduce the other board members present. Our prime presidents, who are in the back, so I'm sharing the meeting. Our soon-to-be president Shane O'Garrow, who is the Board Director-at-Large, is sitting here next to me. Jeff Stevens, Secretary. Jonathan Lee, Treasurer. And, uh, in the, in the back, uh, we have Kenny, who is Kenny Williams, who is our Kenny Honey Membership Chair. And Jennifer Baldwin, who is a board member of Orange Incoming, has been before, but she's here again. And let's see, what's on the board, if anyone, if I have, and the audience right now. A couple of folks can't be here, there are other active general members, so welcome to our December meeting. And without further ado, I'll call on our first respondents to turn the floor.
Uh, thank you everybody, I hope you guys are doing great this evening. Um, before I introduce our new lieutenant, I'm gonna go over our, our normal staff for the month. Um, citywide, crimes against persons, we're down 3%. Uh, crimes against property, we're down 17%. Uh, society, we're up 16%. Again, society is one that we have a special, uh, unit for how we can arrest that with, at least that number. Um, Mayor Mesa, awesome as always, crimes against persons, we're down 17%. Crimes against property, we're down 50%, and crimes against society, we're down 25%. Um, other than that, Mayor Mesa is, is a great community. Um, holiday season is here, uh, what we need to look out for is getting dark earlier. Kids, uh, he bikes, you know, they're gonna get on vacation here soon, so make sure you're keeping an eye out for them. Um, people are getting a lot of gifts, right? They're, they're, it's, it's Amazon, they're getting drop off, of course. Make sure you gotta keep an eye on your neighbors and each other. If anything comes up, make sure you call 911, if it's an emergency, if not, call the non-emergency number. Then get your information up to your, your, uh, your other neighbors. Um, our RCPs are doing a great job for us right now with Get It Done. Uh, I'm sure you have all the where Get It Done app is. We have, so Get It Done is just, you're, you're making a report online. Okay, so if you see something, might say, you see an encampment set up somewhere. You can take a picture of that encampment, go online, city website, Get It Done app. Go, send, send the report, you'll get a, a number back. We have our neighborhood policing division, they're down, please pause the mobile park, it still used to be. Um, and they take, they handle those calls.
I don't know, okay. So what should they, someone driving crazy on the road, you know, picture of their own driveway, can you send it to the app?
Uh, that won't work, because that has to be, that has, we have to, yeah. We have to see that, and, and we, and we do this, um, uh, neighborhood policing, it's like oversized vehicles, uh, traffic jams, anything like that, they, they're the experts with that, so they'll know what to come out.
What was maybe after that?
Get It Done.
Get It Done.
Now, a part of me with that is there's only four officers between mid-city and northeast of the city. So what they do, the, the reports stack up, and that's where our RCPs, they get the reports, they come and they check the area, if it's gone, then that case is closed. If there's still an issue, those will write back to the PD, and those officers come and they solve the, the issue that they were.
Okay, because if they have like percentages on how many people use the app and things like that, and they're recording, I mean, that would be amazing, right?
I think, I can give them, I can give them, um, but it's, it's great.
Gee, that sounds good, awesome.
And before our RCPs got involved, like I said, it was hard for them to, to get, to rate the calls, it's just impossible, because with our staffing, MPD, there's only four officers, two, two divisions, it's hard for them to get there. But we were able to clear a lot more calls on a daily basis now.
Okay, I'll have it.
Okay, yeah. And so what else we got? Keeping an eye on each other, most importantly, the holidays, keeping out of the levels, right? Um, you might not know somebody that, that they don't have family in the area, or they can't make it, so just, just check how they're doing. If they need any help, you know, RCPs, they can go out and talk to them, our officers can go out and talk to them too, if they need to. But, um, just keep an eye out for each other. All right, any other questions for me? Okay, so I'd like to introduce our new lieutenant, Lieutenant Davis. He is now the lieutenant for the 240s, which is Mayor Mesa, Mayor Mar, Script Ranch, um, he's got, he's got the best experience in San Diego. He's got some, he's a day.
All right, and today, my name is, birthday is Darren, last name is Davis. Uh, really cute, a brief district, I've been on 15 years. Uh, I started my career in Southern Division, I go Southern Division, then I go to the border, went over to Southeast Division, then I moved to, moved to the Eastern Division, and I went to Northern, then I went to Mid-City.
Wow, you've been anywhere country.
Yes, I have been in Black, and Black, uh, Northeastern, so I've been, uh, P.O. Two here, as an officer, worked at, uh, visiting the areas, I've been here a little bit, I was a little bit for a conflict, later, part of our, our technical, uh, investigation work over there. Uh, still, uh, professional units, in the past, in our service, I've done it all, uh, so now I'm back in Black, Lieutenant, which is what I said. Uh, so, I'll be here, you can probably see me a lot of hours, you need anything, I, I have a good amount of knowledge, you know, I've been on quite a bit, I'll be having to help. So, there's like a chain.
Thank you for your time, guys.
So, you say what you want to do, slow down, all right, good, slow down, I'll be here.
Um, anything else? Okay, thank you, guys.
Lieutenant Davis, uh, first name D E R R I C.
Birthday, I didn't know you spelled it, because it's, it's here, so it's spelled J A.
Oh, J, okay.
Yeah, J A B A R R I C, sounds like Darren, just saying Jeff, Jeff, Darren.
J A B A R I C.
R, R, two R's.
Two R's, R R I C.
Okay.
Jeff Darren, okay, thank you.
Well, you, you, I go by J D, three.
Thank you so much, that's great, welcome to the community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all, thanks.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, I don't think we have anyone from the fire department tonight. Starting in the new year, I'll reach out a little more often, then, uh, I know the right persons that connect with, connect into the department now. Um, so given that, I think we should go ahead with our brief bit of business for Mayor Mesa County Council members. I'll turn the floor over to Tom Derrick, who's the chair of our Mayor Mesa, and make this a somewhat desperate meeting.
Good evening, everyone. Have you all had the chance to go online to the website, check out, to?
No, sorry.
You're just gonna say yes and no.
I will, no.
All right, so, anyway, this is for the year 27 that we're doing it, and hopefully, um, we'll be solid for that year until the next time, for the next time. Uh, we might still be solid, but we've gotta come up with, uh, more funds. Uh, eighteen dollars, nineteen dollars that we're paying each year for keeping, uh, Mayor Mesa beautiful, um, is not gonna be enough. Okay, I know I've been saying this every time I come up here, but, um, we haven't done our budget, we haven't put any ideas together, we're putting it together. Uh, we're planning on putting, um, Jan, um, January District into ours, so we can afford to take care of the payments on that. And I understand that, uh, she's, um, having a hard time with the funding of that, so, uh, we're trying to try and help if we can. But anyway, back to what we're doing. Um, we create an income of about 1.3 million, we spend about 1.7 million. So, you know that's not gonna hold up for very long, so we have to do something soon. Anyway, who's in favor of, uh, saying okay with the budget that Joe, I, and a couple others at the group have? I'm making a motion to approve. Seconded. Fantastic. Thank you.
Well, no, they have to vote. It's been moved and seconded, and, uh, members all in favor, raise your hand. Do I need to count, I, I don't think, and, uh, yeah, and, uh, any, any opposed? You nominate us, okay, thank you very much. Hopefully, uh, next item of business is, uh, plans update on the Mayor Mesa Fourth of July weekend in 2026. And the first part of that, I'll call on Michael Spencer for his work, Mesa Fireworks, to bring us up to date on fundraising, and plans for our Fourth of July weekend fireworks show.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I want to let you know that we are very close to making our final decision on what days the fireworks will be on. We've been having to base a lot of that on how much money we're raising, and the fact that our deposit has to be put in, in January of 2026, as opposed to what it used to be as far as April. I will let you know that we have raised $9,500 of our $50,000 goal. So, um, you can do some math, you can kind of see where we're leaning. Uh, we are still trying, uh, we're still in the, uh, donation phase, which is the dollar-for-dollar matching. Uh, up to $15,000 is what our donor wanted to raise. Um, so far of that, we've raised $400. So, um, if you have any friends, family who are interested in making donations to the fireworks, now is the time to do it, because your $5 donation becomes $10 for the fireworks. Every little bit helps, we're trying to get as much of the community involved into, uh, the fundraising. We do have some sponsors, though, I do want to thank, All That Shabu gave a nice donation to us recently. Uh, we also received a donation from Little Sakana, that was very, very generous, 'cause, uh, they, uh, were sponsors for the 2025 show, if you continue that going, if you want to, please go visit them. Uh, Vulcan has not made the donation, but they made the pledge to come back again at the $5,000 level, which has been really huge for us. So Vulcan Materials Company, we want to thank them as well. Uh, I believe we have Pet Monster's also made a donation, so we can say thank you, as we leave, and, uh, a lot of sense. They made a donation as well, so, uh, a lot of good sponsors in here. And we have a very, uh, can you, uh, would like to show it off? This is a little casket holder, uh, handmade.
Casket holder, I'm a killer, I'm a hero.
Be a lot. So, opportunity drawing coming in January, so pay attention to our Facebook website everywhere that possibly could be. Handmade, absolutely every stitch right there.
My, you get a little closer, Jennifer.
There you go.
So, she's made several of, uh, great handmade, uh, creations of, uh, pay attention to when we're gonna start doing that, and again, thank you so much to Jennifer, not only on our, our committee, but also, uh, all these great, uh, yes.
Sorry, so those are, are they for sale, or?
So it is gonna be an opportunity drawing, so, uh, $5 donation or so, get, or $10, we usually do. Um, and it'll be based on Facebook, and you'll be able to see it when we go live in January.
How do you join your committee, can you do that?
So, join the fireworks committee, uh, send an email, and also, we have meetings, not this month, but it's usually the last Wednesday of the month we have a meeting, and we're gonna have to find a new location. The current one we have has kind of become untenable for us, but, uh, meetings are usually about an hour within the last Wednesday of the month. Any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Ooh, Michael, how about the Regal Cinema fundraiser?
I did, yes.
Yes.
Uh, pay attention on our website, uh, and we have a, um, opportunity to sell tickets through Regal, get those donations through, uh, Regal Cinemas at, at, uh, those, uh.
Um, when I was looking at the, um, newsletter, I couldn't click on it, so there's no link on there.
It wasn't, didn't go live until today.
Okay.
At the Regal Cinema, when they do it, a nonprofit group does that for a certain amount of time, and more recently, it was the Mayor Mesa High Theater Group, and I clicked their link and saw how it worked. It's a bundle, you get like two tickets for a certain amount of money, and your nonprofit group gets money, like when you do the dining out at a restaurant, take after a restaurant.
It just ran, it went after today, so, so see a link for it, it's now.
I'll get you two tickets, please, I'll teach you people.
Time to go see a movie, help raise the, the fireworks at the same time, there's, there's a Script Mesa Fireworks Facebook page, it also, but. Thank you, Michael. And I will call on Jeff Stevens, who will give us a overview of the Fourth of July, the great plans being planned by Mayor Mesa, the new champions.
Sure, so there are two other parts to this, in addition to the fireworks, uh, council, we have the last couple of years put on a watch party at our best field, starting about four o'clock, and leading up to the fireworks at nine o'clock. In addition to that, there's another group, um, that is trying to bring back parade. The watch party will be around the third, fourth, and then on when the, whichever one of the fireworks is on. The parade is, um, going to be on the fourth, in the morning, let's see if this works. So they weren't able to get, um, use Mayor Mesa Park as a good for our past parades, but it looks like they're gonna be able to use this group, which will start up at the base of Ice, Ice and Park on the north end, and go down to Western Hill and break up somewhere between, uh, Westmore and, and Harlem. So it's still in its, um, early stages, it's not assured of being yet, but they're, they're trying hard to make it work.
Which street is that, I can't see, I have to, uh?
Western Hill.
And Mesa Viking Park is the one that's by Erickson Elementary School, so it's, uh, a group that stays all on Western Hill, it will go past other streets, um, go right there.
Yeah, they do, um, it does take a lot of volunteer power, because they have to block off every street that comes through the Western Hill along there. And you can see there are quite a few of them, but there's like thirteen streets that we've been blocking off, yeah. And then all of those, uh, old streets after they're blocked off. So, it's a, they should be under the, so hopefully, and you guys, you know, and, uh?
Are you trying to volunteer for this, don't people, when you start, when people volunteer for this, like sign up?
Um, there's a link on your website, now.
Yeah, the, on the, uh, candidate's website, there's a link, and you can sign up, and volunteer, yeah.
So there's gonna be volunteers closing the streets, or San Diego P D?
No, San Diego P D will not be, uh, it'll be volunteers.
And, uh, so, yeah, so stay tuned for more information about that as we get closer to the time, and about the fireworks, and we'll be planning good things this summer in Mayor Mesa. And, uh, okay, thank you. Moving right along. We have, that's right, that's where the open forum came here, and I know we did have at least one person signed up for open forum. I double open forum before the, uh, information reports rather than later. Uh, do you wanna read who to sign up?
Uh, Christy Perez.
Yes, come on up.
Hi, everyone, my name is Crystal Perez, I spread out to the New York social community, um, I'm here because I'm hoping to help out with community, and I'm part of the community San Diego, they just launched a new program that allows you to host a mini food parade, um, in hopes to create milk kits for those in need. Uh, so I currently have some recipe cards, each of these recipe cards has three ingredients, some canned, shelf-stable food on there. If you guys are interested in helping out, you can just see the shop for the, uh, ingredients on there, you can coordinate a time for me to either pick up ingredients, or whatever you're more comfortable with, but I will be then, uh, putting the milk kits together with these recipe cards, and, uh, turning them into food in San Diego, so. I hope you guys can help out, and I appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Make sure that Jeff has that information for the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
So now we move into our written reports, and I did let folks know that we have a shortened time this evening, but I do know that, like, there are some people here. I don't see our school board members, you may have boss up here tonight. Um, is Maura Chu here, or Diana? She's usually here, so she'll probably be back in January. Uh, Wes Lenker, I'm from our college. Anna Serrano is our representative for city council members, can't leave. Where's Anna? There's Anna, hey!
Oh, you guys retired, I'm happy, all ready, so I'm, I'm, I'm a member, leave. Uh, I'll email my support with a little bit more details, I'll speed it short. Thank you for my stop by last week, for your turkey, we were to be on the road, I had to eat turkey, so we, we. Tomorrow evening, we'll be having our District Six Troops for Troops this Saturday, so if you are a service member, you're in the military, you are a veteran, or anyone in your family has been, and you live in the District Six area, feel free to sign up, we'll be giving out treats, um, from nine to eleven. Locally, they'll give you a location after you register, so if you want, we'll each let you know. And last, but not least, a little stretch of Gold Coast drag that's very annoying and missing. Um, and it tends to be, it's gonna be this month, depending on weather, so between the rain, hopefully, there's not too much of it this month, and that's about it.
Uh, and that is very exciting, because such a gold coast, we know, and Kenny and her husband know it, it's very close to their house.
Yes.
I've even been envisioning that that might be a stretch to have a parade on, but I finally all made this up. I'm thankful for the update.
All right.
Okay, after, uh, Mayor Todd Glory and Kayla, not here, I do know we have County Supervisor Tara Lawson-Lainer, District Three, new representative, Winston Browns, come on up.
Thanks so much, and for those that haven't met yet, my name is Winston Browns, I actually used to work for the City of San Diego as well, across the highway over to Script Ranch, the March Municipal Firts Office, and tried for a long time to get out here, here in Mesa, and finally got that chance, and Tara Lawson-Lainer, so, thanks so much for hosting me today. Uh, I've, in terms of, uh, obviously, with Omar, who's been around here, so he'll probably switch to application, just means you get twice the representation, you share information, and I sit right next to him, so, if you have any questions, feel free to ask either one of us, and we'll share it right back to you soon as we can. Uh, no real announcements, that's just not, I'm just letting you know that, uh, the board last month actually voted, uh, to approve the county supervisor's recent proposal to create a private-public partnership of local philanthropists. Uh, I'm sure you've been noticing in the news that there's been a lot of fluctuation in federal funding, especially stamp benefits, CalFresh, a lot of Westmore, and over, four hundred, I think it's 400,000 San Diegos are dependent on that assistance, so we've been exploring every avenue that we can to help continue private, provide assistance without raising taxes, which is the key part. So these public-private partnerships, we'll be raising eight to 13 million dollars, uh, with, uh, no, like, uh, uh, several, several partners throughout, the city, uh, the city and county of San Diego, uh, have been willing to match dollar for dollar to ensure that we can provide rapid housing and, like, food assistance, so big thank you. Being us, we'd be glad to see you here, because it really does take the community to look after itself, and looking at fluctuations sometimes. If you have questions about it, and I can talk to you more, send you more information about the board in the evenings, as well as what we said, and how it's going, and we'll go forward, uh, but, uh, just thank you so much for your time today, are there any questions?
Yeah, I know, well, what's on the phone?
So the partners here, unfortunately, I don't have a route to top of my head, but, uh, I actually follow a good one, Shane. I'm excited by, you know, so we reflect in the audience, that's on me, and I'm still fresh, so I'm figuring that out, but, uh, now we share this, since I have it. Oh, I actually got a couple right there, uh, large is the Creed Foundation, Price of Land, uh, Price, Palantir Peace, and the Price Family, is over San Diego foundation, so a couple of the usual suspects, but a lot of folks involved in this one. Cool, all right, any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, Speaker Senator Ronnie Jones, uh, Swachaker here. And Senator Chris Ford, Michael Bravo, Congresswoman Sarah Jacobs, and Marnie Crew, and then Mayor Mesa, you're in line here, Jeff Stevens.
Sure, well, we had a, a meeting in November. Um, the one, um, major item was approving a digital use permit for shoes, um, gym, which will replace the, um, the old writing on Mayor Mesa Boulevard, so that'll be a big 24-hour gym that'll be going, going in there.
Who's doing that?
Jude, is that her name, Jude?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, her thing, I gather they're a big national thing. And, uh, so if we have no, no meeting in December, and then January and February, our meetings are on the Thursday following the third Monday. Normally our meetings are on the third Monday, but because in both January and February, the third Monday is a holiday, we have that on the following Thursday, so our next meeting will be on Thursday, January, uh, 22nd, and that's still here in this, uh, in this room.
Anything else I'm making, don't, you know, we need to go to, you know.
I'll, I'll inquire.
Take, take the crew from, you know, the, the part crew.
You might, uh, check on Lacy Dog, because it is something that I think Jeff.
Well, I'll ask, I mean, they asked the representative, uh, too long ago, and he said they still intend to open in 2026.
Uh, what am I, 2017? Okay, thank you very much, yeah, they, they, they have been sort of a skeleton for some time. I mean, hey, Salt Park is finally getting going, so, uh, Lacy Dog, they, well, end up being a little less lazy, but right now, it feels in quite a lazy place. Mayor Mesa, the new recreation group, Joe, come on up.
Happy holidays to you. We'll be nice until January. We have our next meeting next Tuesday, September 2nd, at Wolf's Bridge at 7:00 P.M. There's a posse only of sandwiches being there. I wanna thank, I don't know if it was you or me, or, but my meeting is on, like, on Mercy Grove next to 15th, it's clean. All weeds are gone, our cow tractors did a good job, so, after 15 years of the market, we got it back, so, if you're gonna get it done, it does work.
Better than ever.
Everybody having an holiday, because when January comes around, we really have to get down to basic things again, because our city is gonna wind up, no money to do anything, so let's, that's a big problem coming up. And we really need to get together as a community, and, uh, stick together and give what we need to our community.
Maybe we should get a, you know, some, to the city.
They would put, they would put, I can read, right? By the way, Kelly, who's the representative, I can't read, she does a great job. She did a great job, so we're very thankful that she's here, and she's like Jennifer, like, she shows up all the time, so. So you get, when you get out of the city, make sure you school her, all right?
She knows how to get things done.
She, she's on our side.
Okay, uh, Mayor Mesa Lightbird, I talked to Lorna, and let her know that we were trying to shorten our reports, and the events scheduled that is in the newsletter and is posted on the cable back there, is the way she and I both talked about getting people to library things, so, uh, there, there is a lot going on at the library, and check it out. Okay, Treasurer's Report, Jonathan Lee.
Good evening, not, not much has changed, uh, we start at eighty-three, at the beginning of the year, eighty-three thousand, and. and made about uh four thousand on street fair, and got fourteen thousand on grants and sponsorship, and seven thousand on two live court, and about four thousand on scholarships, uh, membership receipts, only about twenty-six hundred, that could be better, and then admin's about four thousand dollars, so overall, we're up to eighty-nine thousand.
Very good, and last but not least, membership, we have our incoming membership, uh, vice president sitting at the back table there. You wanna give a little plug for membership, Kitty?
Good evening, everyone, um, yeah, so we are offering, um, this month, uh, before end of the year, uh, we're doing a special, if you sign up within this month, um, you get, what, a year and a half membership, um, extensions for until twenty twenty-seven, with our rates right now, um, and so if you are interested, um, signing, become a member as personal, individual, business owners, um, please come and see me, and you'll get that special prize before end of the year, uh, 'cause next year, the price will eventually go up. Um, and then I just wanted to like to share, there is two holiday markets coming up. Um, one of us, this Sunday, Santa is gonna be there, Red Lobster, so come on out. And then the last but not least, um, our last market for the year, twenty twenty-five, uh, December fourteenth, which is we're gonna have a Christmas and hula dancing, so come on out. Enjoy, and if you have any questions on the membership, please come and see me, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, membership ends at the end of June, so what you said at the end of the year, this year, the June, so you get in six months free all the way till like June twenty twenty-seven.
Right, that's what I, yeah, so, yeah, so I mentioned, if you sign up before end of the year, which means December the thirty-first, that's where you're gonna get the special deal, as what our, our current price right now, but that will carry you over to twenty twenty-seven, so. Okay? Yep?
I definitely get discounts at various places.
Yes.
Right now, Walgreens is the one that definitely does it, and it's, it's, it's a wonderful way to be involved with the community too.
And, and we're working, we're working on more discounts, um, but this is a great, like, Pam says, it's a great way to get involved, uh, get to meet your representative, actually, the next one, we don't, uh, I almost talked about next one, but.
This, this, this is the, the end, yeah, give, give a little plug about.
So next month, we are square in, and uh, uh, city, uh, council member, Ken B., uh, is gonna be here, and he's gonna be able to ask, we'll ask some questions about whatever's going on in the city. People talk about streets, people talk about parking meters, Ken has it all, um, and he will be here, and he's square in for all us new people that are coming in. Uh, so my term officially begins in January.
January.
Kenny's officially begins in January, and so we are really already putting our foot to the ground and getting things together, so come on in, because like I said, Ken is gonna be here, he's gonna be square in, uh, we already got the flies in. Um, so it's gonna be good, uh, but that's also part of the reason why you're helping part of the community, uh, the town councils, because you get a chance to be involved with all that.
Right, and we have, back to the membership again, we have residential members and business members, and great schedules for both of those, so uh, exciting things about the community. I'll just share that I had the opportunity to talk to a current residential member who was able to renew her membership in time to, to vote on the M N A, M A B, uh, budget, so that was great.
And right now, the residential number is only twenty dollars for this month, all the way till June twenty twenty-seven, so that, twenty dollars, that ain't bad, that ain't bad, get it now, get it now, I'm telling you.
Okay, well, with that, I think we would enjoy having everybody stick around for some yummy cookies and fellowship, and a chance to visit a little bit more, get a photo of Santa if you didn't perform the meeting, and this meeting is adjourned for our holiday social with Santa.